Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We will call order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council held Wednesday, October 27th, 2021 PM, at 7:00 PM, sorry. Called as everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you would like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation for us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas society, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we come before you tonight, and we start by saying thank you for your grace, for your love, for your protection. As we look around this room tonight, we see so many men and women who serve in that capacity for the residents and the staff and the visitors of the city of Shenandoah, and we ask you to place a special hand of protection upon them and just let them know how much we appreciate their service and their service that comes from the heart, that they would live a life of servitude for others. We're going to make our way through this agenda, and we ask for your hand of wisdom as we try to make the best decisions that we can for the city of Shenandoah, knowing that we're not always going to be perfect, but we're always going to try our best for our residents, for our staff, and for our strategic partners. We pray all these things in your son's name and all God's people said. Amen. Okay, well, thank you for coming, everybody, tonight. We have a short but exciting agenda. We're going to move right into our first Citizens Forum. I've got a couple of folks that signed up to speak. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes or up to three minutes on agenda or non-agenda items. The only thing that we ask is that you please, oh, thank you, I have five people that have signed up to speak. The only thing we ask is that you speak clearly into the microphone. We do have some folks that are watching on YouTube, and for the folks that are watching on YouTube, we are trying out a new streaming service tonight, so apologize if we have any issues with the audio or the video. Bear with us as this is our first evening. So with that, I will call up to the podium our first speaker, which is Tyson Breedlove.
My name is Tyson Breedlove. I live at 15 Karen Oaks Place, near the intersection between Grogan's Mill and Research Forest. I bought the house about two years ago, and I love living in that neighborhood. It has a very good feel. I love being next to Shenandoah, the city of Shenandoah, and we love to be able to walk to Hughes Landing with our dog and our twin four-year-old children. Last week, I found out through a news article that it's being proposed to build a 170-foot-high overpass near my backyard. This very negatively affects me and my neighbors, and I ask for Shenandoah's support to make sure that all due diligence is taken and that all stakeholders' voices are heard and that this is done the right way. And I'd also like to ask the community of Shenandoah to partner with me, to form some, perhaps a coalition, or just a group, or a team, so that we can make sure we do what is best for our community and what is best for our property values and what is in the long-term interest of the city of Shenandoah and the township of the Woodlands. And I would also like to encourage that fiscal spending be done in a responsible manner. I understand there's some money to be spent, and I don't understand why it has to be spent $30 million on an overpass in an intersection that I go through every day, and it takes me only a few minutes to get through. It's one of the least, it's one of the most convenient intersections that I go through in the Woodlands. I don't find the intersection to be any trouble for me, and I go through there at least twice every day. So I'm just confused about why that particular interception is of such great importance for a overpass, and perhaps $30 million could be spent, better spent, at another intersection. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so, next up is, and I'm probably going to get this wrong, Zolan Carl? Did I get it right or wrong?
Oh, my hand was off.
Close enough, okay. Good enough for government work, right?
Actually, it's Zoltan Carl. Also a resident in the Grogan's Forest neighborhood, and also wanted to speak about the same topic. So, thank you for the time and opportunity to speak today. The intersection at Grogan's Mill Road and Research Forest Drive has been reviewed on a number of occasions for both safety and traffic flow. Residents and businesses in the area have been vocal and opposed to anything but at-grade improvements for a number of years. At one point, there was a petition with a high number of signatures obtained to oppose the proposed overpass or diamond interchange options. Data shows that at-grade improvements will support traffic and safety goals through at least 2035. Data is also being questioned as traffic projections are proving to be inaccurate. The last 18 months have shown us that the world has changed. This new normal minus COVID does not equal the old normal. The way people work has changed, and with it, projected traffic volumes, peak hours, and other facets are also changing. Clearly, there has been a resounding voice of opposition to an overpass or any great separation solution for this intersection. Additionally, there's a very real need to have the four parties working together, not in a vacuum or against each other. The intersection falls into the jurisdiction of Shenandoah, the Woodlands, Precinct 2, and Precinct 3. There's an ongoing concern that information is being kept not only from the residents but appointed individuals responsible for proposed improvements. Transparency with and involvement of the residents, availability of data, and in a timely manner are requested and critical to the success of this effort. I'd like to recognize and commend the at-grade improvements already implemented. They have provided an immediate and positive impact and have made the intersection faster and safer for everyone. Lastly, the intersection of Lake Woodlands and Grogan's Mill Road has been part of the studies, but very little focus has been given to it. The level of service recorded is lower, and the traffic volume is almost as high as the intersection at Research. Improvements at the Lake Woodlands intersection would have a much lower negative impact as there are no residential areas present and would further ease traffic overall, including the intersection and Research Forest Drive. I urge the council to consider only at-grade improvements at the Research Forest intersection and look at Lake Woodlands intersection for larger improvements. I also urge the council to work collectively and with the residents in a timely and transparent way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Josh Parks.
Hello, my name is Josh Parks. I have a 707 Rosewood Drive. Been a resident for 33 years. I'm here today to talk about the speeding in the neighborhood that has become a great concern of mine and I think a lot of other residents. It's been voiced on Facebook and with neighbors. Also, I have a problem with people running the stop sign at Driftwood and Rosewood. I live on the cul-de-sac side, and it's a daily occurrence where a car will go through that intersection at least 30 miles an hour without stopping. I feel like it's no longer safe for me to take my children outside to play in our front yard, so we take our golf cart to the toddler park. I refuse to drive my car there because of the people that speed past Twisted Oak on Shenandoah Drive as well. The crime is getting higher in the city, which is also a concern. I know that, you know, our environment and community is growing greatly at a fast rate. I know that our police officers also do an outstanding job to protect our citizens. I think that maybe we could come back with the dummy cars parked at Enchanted or on Savannah, also in front of the toddler park, the cul-de-sac at the end of Holly Hill, and I think patrol should be heavier inside the neighborhood at this time. Inflation's going up, crime is going to rise very quickly here if things don't change with our actual federal government. But anyways, I know the police are doing what they can for us, and I know it's a hard time for everyone, and it's probably hard to be an officer at this time. You know, I know a lot of people don't respect y'all anymore, but I take great pride in what y'all do for us. Also, I'm going to bring up a subject that's a little touchy today. We know that Ms. Hepburn passed away and her mother Dorothy. I believe I always called her grandma. I've known her for almost my whole life. I know Julia didn't get along with everyone, but, and, you know, sometimes me and her bump heads, but I would like to say a few nice things. You know, me and Julia didn't always agree, but there's one thing everyone can agree with. She was very passionate about her city, and she loved her residents and her community greatly. The trailer parked in their driveway is opposing safety measures to the city. It's probably against fire code, and I would like to offer a solution, maybe for the city to help Zane in his grieving period and his cousin Leah that also lives there. I'd like the city to possibly offer Zane the chance to park the trailer on the side of City Hall for the next 30 or 45 days till he can find a permanent residence for his car hauler. And I also think maybe City Council should put into code maybe a grieving, sorry, now it got dry. Also, like a residence grieving pass for residents that are grieving for minor violations, you know, tall grass, or there's families here that, you know, older generations where they passed away, but their family's not here, so if the grass gets high and they're not in Texas, you know, maybe some kind of pass where there's no repercussions. So, you know, I lost my father-in-law this year, and, you know, I took care of him for five years. I understand the grieving process, and to lose two loved ones, I could only imagine how hard it is on them. So I'm asking the city to help out a fellow resident and let him park their trailer here at City Hall on the side to help with congestion and safety on our streets.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Okay, next up is Ms. Esther Lum.
Okay, Esther Lum at 31 South Emery Bend. First thing I want to say is I hadn't planned on it, but the two gentlemen that spoke about the overpass, I totally agree, and we strongly object to that. I'm not really sure why that's back on the table again. Secondly, I want to thank the officers, as you acknowledged, Mayor, because it is nice to live in a city that, where we can feel safe and we don't have the dishonor and the disrespect for law enforcement, and so I'm proud to be a citizen here. Why it came tonight was last summer, we applied for a permit to replace an existing fence. The permit was approved and the fence completed, but we recently received a notice from the township that we did not obtain a permit from them for this new fence, and we needed to correct that. So I am aware that my property and all property in Sections 5, 6, and 7 of Shenandoah are subject to the Woodlands Township due to a conversion of the HOA formerly known as the Woodlands Community Association. So I'm asking City Council to take the following steps with respect to this matter, because we have several neighbors who are all facing this, we're equally unhappy about it. One is to place this issue on the next agenda and invite residents to share their concerns. Secondly, advise us whether there are different requirements for such permit approvals in Shenandoah versus the township, because if the requirements are the exact same, why not have only one entity do this approval? It doesn't make sense because to separately approve the same thing if the requirements are the same, dual approvals are a waste of resources. And if the requirements are different, then I would encourage Shenandoah and the township to meet, to resolve those differences. They should also revisit the issue of why a permit is even needed in a case of a fence because it's existing. It's not new construction, so it shouldn't be that difficult. Finally, Shenandoah residents have no say in the township government, and so we believe it is manifestly unfair for us to be subject to this kind of a dual process. I want Shenandoah City Government to rely and point out this fact to the township when you negotiate with them, because it's basically taxation compliance without representation when we can't vote. So, thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Okay, and last but not least, Roy, is it Ray or Roy?
Ray.
Ray Osack.
Hi, my name is Ray Osack, 31 South Emery Bend Place, here to speak, the same topic of my wife Esther there. So actually, I'm speaking on behalf of another neighbor who can't be here tonight, Sarah Warmer, lives across the street from us, same concern. We have both neighbors, some others aren't here tonight as well, same issue with, we're getting letters from Woodlands saying, hey, we need permits for their work, for their approval as well. So anyway, just want to read a letter from Sarah because it's concerning her as well. So this is from her to you. So, members of City Council, we recently received a letter from the Woodlands Township stating that we were out of compliance because we had replaced our windows. We did receive the necessary permits from Shenandoah. Our new windows are from renewal by Anderson. This is totally absurd that the Woodlands says we have to have their approval. I do not get to vote for their council and do not pay taxes directly to the Woodlands. I pay taxes to the city of Shenandoah, Montgomery County, State of Texas, and the United States of America. There's no reasons for Shenandoah citizens to need their approval. We moved from the Woodlands in October 2004 and were the first house in Kentwell Forest because we wanted to be a part of the city of Shenandoah. We chose, we choose to leave the Woodlands because we didn't want all their unreal rules. I contacted the township and spoke to Jill Barnes, who is the contact person for what is now the Village of College Park. She told me that when a permit is pulled for Shenandoah, the city notifies the township. I have to think that this does not affect the residents of Shenandoah Valley and only the residents of the new areas of Shenandoah. Also, what right does the city of Shenandoah have to share my personal information and activities with the Woodlands Township? I went to the township and gave up trying to find the permit because there were 114 pages with 50 permits per page. This is totally ridiculous. Why should I pull a city of Shenandoah permit for the improvements I want to do to my property if I'm going to be subjected to this nonsense? It's time for the Shenandoah City Council to stand up to the township and remove the second permit that the Woodlands is requiring, and it's time to treat the residents of Kentwell Forest and the other new neighborhoods like we belong to the city of Shenandoah and are not just residents to keep your tax coffers full. So this is sincerely from Sarah Warmer, so speaking on her behalf tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for everyone who got up and spoke, and as always, if you did not get a chance to fill out a card and get up and speak, we do have a second Citizens Forum at the end of the meeting. You can speak then. Council inquiry, does anybody have anything right now that they would like to bring up?
Yes, I do. Yeah, so this is actually regarding to the intersection of Grogan's Mill and Research Forest. I've been around for quite a few years, and yes, this issue has been investigated, researched, and discussed ad nauseam, yet here we are again, dealing with it. Must say, it's my duty and the duty of all of our elected officials, appointed officials, and staff members of Shenandoah to stand in the gap and defend the residents and businesses of Shenandoah, to first and foremost, consider the needs of Shenandoah, and to do what is best for Shenandoah. It is not the responsibility of the residents and businesses of Shenandoah to bear the burdens and deal with the tremendous suffering that would be imposed by proposed changes to this intersection. This council, and to be clear, many previous councils, have been opposed to any overpass, underpass, or widening of Research Forest at Grogan's Mill. There have been many other options that have yet to be seriously discussed. Shenandoah should make a clear statement regarding our position. To that end, I would ask that a resolution be placed on the next meeting to include the following and perhaps other statements. That the city of Shenandoah sees the need to continually monitor and improve traffic throughout our city, and we are willing to work with our neighbors towards that end. However, we will not improve traffic at the expense of our residents and businesses. Grogan's Mill north of Research Forest is a designated residential feeder street. We are opposed to any change in elevation of the intersection of any kind being an overpass or underpass, and we support adding designated turn lanes to ease traffic, and perhaps we have other suggestions that staff might add before the next meeting. Do you have any other council members who would also agree to have such a resolution?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that being on the, I'm not, I'm not sure if everybody's misinformed or doesn't understand what the position was stated previously.
That's why I want this, that's why I want this, because I keep hearing it. I'm like, we've been pretty clear, so that's, that's why I think.
Was it much more than a couple of months ago that we had a resolution in opposition of that?
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can put as many resolutions as we need to on the agenda. I don't think anybody's opinion has changed that nobody wants an overpass at Research Forest and Grogan's Mill, so I'm fine with putting that on the agenda, and I think it's probably a good idea to circle back to our dual covenants with the Woodlands and put that on the agenda as well. I know we haven't brought that up in a while and discussed the hows and the whys that exist, but it's probably not a bad idea to bring that back up and review it again and talk about the hows and the whys those exist.
I totally agree, totally agree with that.
Yeah. Real quick then, just since we're giving updates, I just got back from a meeting with Commissioner Metz and Judge Keough's chief of staff, as well as some other folks, and a couple of different improvement projects were brought up and talked about, but the big, the big picture was it was about I-45 and 242. And so obviously, David Memorial fell into that discussion. And so, just to keep everybody on everybody's radar, so everybody knows that we are still actively working with the county, the city of Conroe, TechDOT, multiple other entities to continue to push that project forward. It's very close to the finish line. In fact, so close that I saw something tonight from TechDOT where they've already assumed that project is going to have, I don't know if you picked up on the curb cuts when they do the flyover, so TechDOT is going to help with a flyover from I-45 to 242 north to eastbound. It's that one that's already, you know, kind of stubbed out, it's dangling, right? Within that project, they have a curb cut for David Memorial Drive that indicated to me that while we're waiting on TechDOT for some additional funding, it looks to me like they've already assumed that's going to take place because they're putting it within another project. So that was, that was a neat thing to see at that meeting tonight. I did go to the Woodlands Township meeting, when was that? Somebody tell me when that was, was that last week?
Last week.
Last week, sorry, my days run together. I did go to the Woodlands Township meeting last week about Research Forest and Grogan's Mill. Chairman Gordy Bunch did a presentation about the fact that Precinct 3 is proposing an overpass again at Research Forest and Grogan's Mill, and I was very clear about the fact that Shenandoah's position just, again, puzzles me why some people misconstrued what I said, I guess, but I was very clear about the fact that Shenandoah residents and businesses are both, both opposed to anything other than an at-grade solution at that intersection, and that there is currently an at-grade solution on the table, thanks to bioengineering, that gives us great safety, great service levels, all the way to 2035, that's been designed, if the county so desires to proceed with that project. And notice I said the county because, once again, that intersection falls outside of the city limits of Shenandoah, so it is not, it's not our intersection. But as always, we continue to try to have a seat at the table so that our voice can be heard. Sometimes when you do that, no good deed goes unpunished, and instead, you just get bashed for it. So, that's okay. We'll continue to go to the table, and we'll continue to fight for Shenandoah. Those are, those are the only two things that I wanted to mention as far as projects that we've been working on with other entities, so. All right, so nobody's got anything else?
Just, just let me add, we have not, and we will not have anything to do with any funding for that project. Absolutely not.
All right, we will move on to Item 7, which is promotion of Officer McDuffie to sergeant. Yay, something fun to talk about.
All right, folks, this is our favorite agenda item that we get to discuss. I want to take a little time to speak about Cedric and say a few words about him, and then, following that, Chief Dunlap will pin his ceremoniously remove his officer badge, his silver officer badge, and replace it with the gold sergeant badge. So Cedric was raised in Point Blank, Texas by his mother Sandra, along with three siblings, Tyrone, Tasha, and Kevin. He graduated from Cold Spring High School in 2003 and was immediately employed by the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. Cedric served with TDCJ for seven years, promoting the sergeant during his time there as well. In 2010, Cedric began his dream of becoming a police officer and attended Lone Star College Police Academy in Houston. He began his career in law enforcement back at his home school of Cold Spring ISD as a school resource officer and was with them for two years. And then in 2014, Cedric joined us here at Shenandoah PD and has served as a patrol officer for almost eight years. He's been a field training officer and assisted with recruiting during that time. He's also received an award of excellence, and he was a lifesaving medal recipient as well. Cedric has been married to his wife, Letitia, for 11 years, and Cedric and Letitia have a 26-year-old daughter, Kamisha, and a 16-year-old son, Jaleel, who currently attends Oak Ridge High School. Cedric enjoys spending time with family, watching the newest movies, and trying a variety of different restaurants as a food critic. Cedric was inspired to become a police officer at a young age by his mother after hearing her stories of correctional life, where she later retired with more than 20 years of experience. Combined with his strong desire for helping other officers and with his family's support, Cedric sought to obtain promotion, to be in a better position, to be a role model and a leader for his fellow officers. Cedric credits his accomplishments to his family, friends, and numerous coworkers and supervisors, both past and present. We're excited to have Cedric in this position, and we'll turn it over to Chief Dunlap.
I thought it was because he was my AOR officer.
So actually, I've talked to Cedric outside, and I told him the real reason why he's getting promoted is because I'm tired of having to use a stool to put pens on. So, no, actually, Cedric, we're very proud of you. It's an honor of mine to do this. You have the respect of your peers, you have the respect of your administration, and you definitely have that, so this is definitely my.
Thank you, Cedric, and thank you to everyone in our Shenandoah PD. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, with that, we will move to Item 8, which is presentation of the monthly MDD report.
Okay. Well, the MDD just did approve additional funding for Holly Hill Trails Park for $200,000. So that's Item 11 on our agenda, so we aren't going to need to discuss that one any further. Changes on the plan, the East Side Wetlands Permit, the estimate now is for approval in December of this year. John, is that still on target?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Other than that, there were no significant changes on the report, and I'll be refreshing with the new budget approved projects on the next report. That's it.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, we'll move to Item 9, which is presentation of the annual pool report. Come on up, Ms. Woody.
Yeah.
I know, right, it got quiet quick. Everybody left.
Is your bike all tuned up now for Halloween?
Not really. I've got a more pressing issue. My mother's 100, and she, her social calendar has multiplied, and I have to run up and down between here and Dallas.
Pull the mic down. There you go.
There you go, okay, yeah, now you gotta need a jump. Okay, no, I, I don't know if I'll make it back. I'm gonna try, but I have to be at a gala for my mother on Saturday night in Dallas, so I have to take care of, have to take her so that she gets this big, huge award in Dallas, so. She doesn't drive. Okay, hi. As you know, I gave a piece of the plastic, it's up there somewhere. There we go. As many of you are aware, we've had some fun with the freeze and shortages, so we have converted the pool and from the bag of salt to the liquid chlorine, or bleach, whichever you want to call it. And it works like a champ. It looks a lot different in there with that big 300-gallon doohickey tank. And the new eye wash station, which I didn't know we had to have, but was informed, and Mark had to quickly figure that one out, because with liquid bleach, you have to have an eye wash station. Didn't know that, but okay. Willis High School has bought that blue tarp. There it is. And it's bubble wrap. And today, with 25-plus mile-an-hour winds, that's fun to keep it on the pool. But anyhow, the choice of rope and PVC pipe and noodles, it stays put. Lots of rope. But Willis High School has purchased that, and it makes the difference of heating the pool a whole lot different, like cutting the bill by 2/3. So, it's a huge difference. It's bubble wrap. I don't care what you call it. It's bubble wrap. It's heavier, kinda, sorta, but it's got a solar film in it, and that's the difference, because that's the clear versus the blue. And so, if you haven't seen the pool, and it's all wrapped up, come past and look through the fence, or come in and we will show you, let you feel it. It's quite a feat to keep that on the pool, but it works.
Does it keep the debris out as well?
Yes. Not 100%, but the leaves don't go in the water. They sit on top, and then you just kinda brush them off. So, it really works. And keeping it there is the trick. May I help you by answering any major questions you might have, or minor questions?
Software problem you had at the beginning of the year, registering...
We had fun.
Quite a bit. I had several, and I mean several, residents call and complain. Has that ever been fixed? Have you navigated it, or is there something we need to do to rectify that?
It was a learning curve, but the younger population, the ones without the gray up here, who are very tech savvy on this, they had no problem. It was those of us who have been here a while who had a lot of problems, including myself. My assistants, Suzie Mason and Ashlyn Stevens whipped through it like it was a house of fire, and they figured it out. Once those two had figured it out, they were able to teach all the other guards. They left me out of the picture. Go away, because they knew my gray hair was not going to figure it out very quickly. But yeah, it took a while. The majority of the problems were not having it do what we thought it was going to do first. You had to have a log on, and once you had that, then the actual pool membership was easy. It was the fact you had to do everything twice. You had to do the log on, get all the family members done on the front, then go over to the pool membership. Most people tried putting themselves in and then go straight to the pool membership, and then got very hot under the collar when they had to go back and put people, their family members.
You couldn't add people after?
You could. You could, except it was a... It took a lot longer to do it second if you could do it all here in the front. It was click, 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 click. If you went here, here, and then back over here, it was not friendly. It did a lot of tongue spicking out because it did not like you. That's when the guards got very creative and figured out they could take the information down in a shorthand method on a piece of paper and then sit there and click it in fast, because the guards were able to loop back faster than the patrons. But once we had the people in, everything went smooth. Next year, nobody has to do that front side. It's already in.
They just have to remember the password.
Yeah. We can reset it. We've learned how to do that, too.
There should be an automatic reset for them, yeah.
It might be.
We wrote it under the keyboard at the pool for everybody.
It might be, but many people, they forgot their password.
Password is pool pass?
Some of them were. Yeah, some of them were their last name, their password was their last name, or their street address. So, yeah, it worked that way. The only glitch we had was we have to read some of the forms. We have to set up the files and fields. And then, we had a little bit of a glitch on the rental, but we figured out what we did wrong with there, and that's a very easy fixable now.
It seems like it's working.
No, it's much better than it was a year ago.
All right. Well, thank you, Woody. Appreciate it.
No problem. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Woody.
Thanks, Woody.
Okay, with that, we will move into Item 10, which is discussion and possible action regarding a purchase agreement for police department vehicles.
Mayor and Council, we're asking for approval to change the scope of the purchase from the Tahos to the Chargers. This will not require any additional funds, and I'll be available for any questions that y'all have.
To make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving the purchase agreement with Freedom Chevrolet Dallas for the purchase of two 2021 Dodge Chargers and Sidtons and Martins upfitting to our specification in lieu of the earlier request of Chevrolet Tahos. Due to current availability concerns.
I have a motion by Councilman Broad. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
Is the cost approximately the same as what we were looking at with the Tahos?
No, it's gonna be significantly less.
Okay. And you're okay with not waiting for the Tahos?
I'm okay not waiting for the Tahos. Unfortunately, the Tahos are gonna be either non-existent for any of the ones that are available out there right now, or they're gonna be, I believe it was a 270-day wait or something like that. So, it's gonna be a long time for we're able to get any. So, this is our alternative to getting those.
I remember well when the Crown Vic disappeared.
Right.
And I sold a lot of police cars in my lifetime, so...
Cars just, you know, I'm sure you all are aware, right now, cars are just, in general, they're difficult to find, and especially the police package vehicles right now, so we're just having to do what we need to do, but...
I just don't want you to be unhappy in the next four to five years that we have these, and somebody's complaining because they're stuck in the car.
Right, right. We have a couple of guys that would be more excited about it because they're smaller cars. They can see a little bit better, fit a little bit better, but they won't be for some of these big guys that we have.
Yeah, so is there a reason that they're black? And are we gonna wrap them to be white to look like our Tahos?
So, that was one thing that we discussed was the graphics and everything on there. The difficulty with some of these, the Chargers, is the way that they're shaped. I don't know if y'all see the indentation and the doors and everything, so the graphics will have to change. We're still gonna utilize the carbon fiber and everything, but we're gonna have to change it a little bit. But this is what was available. We were contemplating doing maybe a black and white for the Chargers, but you know, this is what's available right now, so we're trying to grab what we can. We were discussing painting the doors and...
Going to classic black and white?
Yes.
So, yes. And then, of course, there's a heat issue. The other question is, so several years ago, you were around when we explored a different vehicle. We went to the Explorer, and so I have a bit of a concern with jumping on two of these, and I'm just gonna kinda raise that.
Right.
You know, I'm all for, hey, let's try something new.
Right.
Dropping 120, and we get here and we find, you know, running over curbs and taking corners and the various things that we tend to have to do in this area that aren't a problem with the Tahos can suddenly start having issues with the Chargers. And so, how we are used to driving, how we are used to handling the vehicles, life repair, tires, the whole... This whole vehicle's fundamentally different than the Tahoe.
Most definitely.
And so, I guess I'm a bit concerned about grabbing two, and I understand, you know, we've got a Tahoe. We were able to grab one.
Right.
I'm a little concerned about grabbing two right off the bat, and, you know, now we're stuck with not just one, like we were with the Explorer that nobody wanted to drive and the case and all that issue. But now, we've got two of these cars that nobody wants to be in. Anyway, that's my sort of concern here is us jumping on two.
Right. So, I can tell you a little bit about that, and speak a little bit about that. As far as the Explorers, I definitely was not in favor of that. Any type of V6 vehicle for police use in our environment, being on I-45, is just not gonna be a proper vehicle. We're gonna hit too many high revs and everything, and the heat distribution, it's just not gonna work out. Also, anything with a front-wheel-drive type of vehicle is not gonna be suitable for our standards. The other options is the... I believe, I can't remember what all V8s... I think it's just the Chargers and the other Dodge SUV, Durango, is the other, the V8 vehicle, but...
Sure, I'm not questioning the vehicle choice.
Right.
I'm just questioning, do we need to buy two, or can we buy one and see if everybody, if it's gonna work?
Right. So, in the past, we've had Chargers in the past, and I'll tell you, so...
That's been a while.
Yes, it has been a while. And so, what happened when we first purchased the Chargers in the past, they were the first actually police package Tahos in the state of Texas. We were proud of that. But however, purchasing a new vehicle such as that without being tried and tested is not the brightest idea. So, what happened was, is that after a few years of driving those vehicles, we determined that the brakes were too small, the radiators did not cool the engines, and the motor mounts were not substantial enough to handle the amount of torque we were giving them. So, Dodge has actually created their own division to deal specifically with law enforcement. And so, they listen to law enforcement, and they patterned those vehicles to be specific for us, and they've changed the motor mounts, they changed the braking system, and they also put in stronger motor mounts to be able to handle the torque. And the difference as far as driving and everything is what we have to have. I don't disapprove of going over ditches and everything like that. I know it's necessary, but I definitely wouldn't try to dis...